I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all who are listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. During the public comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and have five minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they would like to address the board during the public comment section. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they would like to address the board in the public comment section. Those attending in person, please sign up at the signup sheet that is located near the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board can, the board cautions the visitors not to disclose confidential account information or disclose account information on account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide the individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and the presentations may be found on the BPU website. If you're using Zoom, they will also appear on your screen. My name is Mary Gonzalez and I'm member at large, position one, and currently the board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, our general manager, David Haley, who's member at large, position two, Tom Groneman, second district and board chair, who's with us on Zoom tonight, Bob Mylan, first district, Jeff Bryant, third district, and on my left, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, number three, and currently board vice chair, Angela Lawson, our deputy chief counsel. I'd like to remind you to please put your phones on silent and please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made almost anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, I would like you to rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Angela?
Roll call, Gonzalez?
Here.
Groneman? I can come, I will come back.
Okay.
Haley?
Present.
Mylan?
Here.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Groneman? Rob is, is Tom?
We just had roll call, Tom.
Should I go? Um, yes. I'll call his name during the other votes.
And we have a quorum, so, okay. Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda, are there any comments on the agenda as it's presented?
This is Jeff, moved to approve.
This is Rose, I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this agenda, roll call, please.
Roll call Groneman, or excuse me, Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman? Haley?
Aye.
Mylan?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Um, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of January 4th. Are call for corrections or additions if there are any? If not, a call for a motion to approve those minutes?
This is Rose, so moved.
Second. Mylan?
Been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Okay, so I would note that he is present at six oh four. Haley?
Aye.
Mylan?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
That, that motion carries.
All right, and now I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of January 4th. If there are no corrections or additions?
This is Jeff, moved to approve.
This is Rose, I second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman? Groneman? I'll come back. Haley?
Aye.
Mylan?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Groneman?
I don't know what happened. All right, um.
Due to the issue of audio feedback, I forced you to unmute.
I think, I think just going forward do that. I think we're okay.
Right, that motion carries.
Okay. Um, all right, I turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you. Waiting on Jenny to bring me the list of those that are signed up to speak tonight. First, I'll ask Susan Stevens to come up. State your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes to address the board.
Hi, I'm Susan Stevens, forty eighteen Silver Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero six. And just, just wanted to urge you guys to move forward with establishing the community working group to, to help with responsiveness to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Nicole Hay. Said, hey, good, I'm sorry. You can state your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes to address the board.
Hey, this is my first time doing this. My name is Nicole Haygood, I'm at nine thirty five Ann Avenue. And I don't know if this is the right time to say this or not, but I live at this location. I just moved to this location and it's just me, myself and I at my home. And my bill exceeds five hundred dollars a month for just me. And I think it's ridiculous, they came out, a worker came out to my home and took a look at my meter to address, I guess if there was an issue with how it's being read, because they do not come out and read the meters. They have something on the system that kind of does a guess. And it, with me being the only individual at my house, and I work over ten to twelve hours a day. There's no way that my bill should be over five hundred dollars a month. It's been seven, it's been nine, it fluctuates. And I would like the board to, I don't know if they need to come back out doing meter reads or if we need to get upgraded systems, thermostats or what in the homes to get a better reading. But for me, I cannot afford being a, just, I work every day, but five hundred and over five hundred dollars a month for one individual is a lot of money for, and I'm, and I only have electric as well, so that's a bit much. So I would like for it to be addressed. I was supposed to receive an answer as far as the status of if something was broken or if something needs to be checked. And I haven't received a reply yet as of last Friday, when a technician came out to my home. I was told I would receive feedback on Monday. And it's Wednesday now and I still haven't received any information and this was of last week. So it would be great to get, and then another thing, I, I lived in Wyandotte County previously. And when I lived there in Wyandotte County before, I moved away out of town, came back. When I was living here in two thousand eighteen, we were not paying unified government as well as BPU. So now we're paying for electricity twice and water twice, which I, I don't get that. And, and the pilot, the pay in lieu of taxes. So it's like if you don't pay this, you're gonna get your utility shut off. So I think a lot needs to be addressed as far as how billing is done. I have a best friend that lives in a six bedroom, five and a half bath house and her utilities is less than mine. She says she, her bill was two hundred and some dollars a month and she has five kids. So there's no way five people living in a house, utilities and Piper is more, is less expensive than my house off of Ten Street. Thank you.
Ms. Haygood, we, we do have customer service director in the back. I'll ask her to get with you. Janetta, you and Jeremy can get together, talk about whether we completed the field visit to her home. What did we discover while we're in the field, what was reported back? And then if you can have somebody talk to her about the bill itself, why do UG charges, all the other UG charges that's on there, take a look at our, at her billing history and see if there is anything you can determine from that. So she's, she's in the back, she'll, she'll get with you and then she'll report that to me and then I'll make sure we follow back up with you, wouldn't ask her.
Thank you, if I might. Certainly, I appreciate the fact that you are back in Wyandotte County and that you've done a cost comparison and done your work on that. I would also ask that we try to find what the history has been in, in your house. Sometimes these homes are not as equitable because of, you know, the, the heating, the windows and what have you. They, and so I would hope that we could find out what the history has been prior to your return. You said you've been back in the house a year?
No, I just moved in there in July.
In July, so perhaps we could look at the history of, you know, prior to, if there was someone who occupied it to see what the difference might be. It might be, you know, the way the house is in part constructed because that is, but I agree with you. That's, that's a, that's a horrible bill to, to have to maintain. And I certainly hope we'll be able to get some kind of relief for you, so glad you're back in Wyandotte County.
Thank you.
Ms. Haygood, did you say you're all electric?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Next person signed up is, next person signed up is C.C. Mank, if you can come up to the.
Can you sign up over there to talk, to speak?
You can state your name and address for the record and five minutes, please.
My name is C.C. Mank and I live in Wyandotte County. First of all, let me elaborate on Ms. Nicole. I encouraged her to come here when she reached out to me and showed me her bill. And what she means by two charges is, is on the electric bill, the first two charges say one fifty five, one hundred and fifty five for an electric and then one hundred and fifty one for electric. In total, her bill was five hundred and something, that was this month. Previously, in an apartment, it's not a house, Mr. Haley, it's an apartment. Pre, yes, an apartment, it's not a house. Previously, it was seven and nine hundred dollars. That is extreme for an apartment. I wouldn't care if it was all electric or not. That is extreme for one person who works ten to eleven, and she works multiple jobs. I encouraged her to come here because of that. When, the last time I was here, I spoke to you about a bill that was eleven hundred and ninety three dollars. I watched that bill every month, it went down to five hundred, four hundred, three hundred, it went to five hundred and then it's back up to eleven hundred and ninety three this month. Now, the difference is, is these people just stopped washing in their home. They, they stopped washing clothes in their homes, started going to laundromat because it was cheaper than paying you guys. So I'm trying to figure out why the bill fluctuates that much. Does it have anything to do with the fact that he keeps asking for raises every other meeting or whatever? Because I've seen it in the news that Mr. Johnson here continues to ask for raises while our lobby is still not open and functioning and you guys are saving money. I mean, because you save money, we should get a deal, not you. Our kids should be able to be secure, not yours. I mean, you, you already make a lot of money, I'm tax dollars, sir. And I haven't been at the meetings to address this, but I do want to take this time to address that, no, I don't agree with any more raises for you, sir. I don't. You already make enough money.
I, I would caution all of our visitors or would ask you to please address your concerns to the board. This is your time to address your concerns to us, to the board.
To the board because you all vote on his rights. And I said I don't agree with any more raises for him and that going for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up is Lawrence Smith. You can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
I live at twelve thirty Washington Boulevard, Kansas City, Kansas. So I've been living there for approximately about almost eighteen years. I came from Kansas City, Missouri, moved to Kansas because I brought property over here. And since then, I've been, you know, renovating property, doing things to it or whatever have you. When I came here, I did have electric as far as furnaces, hot water tanks, because electricity actually at that time was reasonable. But within the last almost ten years, electricity has kind of just kept increasing. And it wasn't gradually, it was rapidly. I had a tenant that lives in a two bedroom house, his bill got up to almost twelve hundred dollars. That's ridiculous for a two bedroom house. He has replacement windows, I replaced the windows. And then I was thinking, well, maybe it was because he had electric heating. I changed it out to gas and his bill still was almost eleven hundred dollars. That was in the summertime, using the air conditioner. So it's gotta be something going on with the kilowatt count or maybe some glitch in the computer or something, because, you know, that is an astronomical amount of money for someone to pay in a very small place. You know, I say in a four bedroom house, four bathroom, I mean, my bill usually run about three, you know, three sixty, you know, but, I mean, I say in a huge place. So to hear this person and looking at their bill, I thought maybe he was exaggerating, like maybe you just paid part of your bill? He said, no, we paid the bill last month, it was six. Now this month's eleven, and I looked at him like, wow. Now, I mean, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. A bill for almost twelve hundred dollars for a two bedroom, one bathroom house, that's on one level. It's ridiculous. I mean, it's gotta be something we can look into, you know, to try to, you know, I, I wouldn't say to help the people out, but for BPU to help the individuals, you know, in this county. Because like she was saying, I know, I got friends too that don't live within this Kansas City area, you know, and they pay less on their bill than people that live within the Kansas City, you know, Wyandotte County area, around the downtown area. You know, we're talking about from Forty Seventh Street down to Fifth Street. You know, it's ridiculous. I mean, I don't know what's going on. I'm pretty sure it's more than what meets the eye for somebody to pay that kind of money. It's almost like we're paying bills for someone else. So, I mean, that's not fair, being that the income level in this area is very low and people are struggling. I see people on Sunday lined up to get food, you know, at the church up here on Fifth Street, you know, and I'm pretty sure they're probably getting food because they can't afford to pay their bills. I mean, it's like, you know, either I eat or I have my lights on. And if, nobody should have that choice. You know, to say, well, I'm gonna put, you know, food before nourishment, you know, before me able to, you know, walk in the, walk in the dark. It's not fair. So it is something that we need to look into as a county. We pay a lot of taxes in Wyandotte County. I know I did, my taxes went up, I had to pay almost ten thousand dollars this year in taxes. And paying that amount of money in taxes, you know, I should see something, some changes or something going on. And I think it should start with utility. As I have to say, thank you.
Mr. Smith, can I ask you a question, please?
Smith, can you go back?
Oh, sorry, that's okay. Um, of, of that twelve hundred dollar bill that you mentioned on one of your tenants?
Yes.
Do you know what portion of it was associated with the electric and water charges versus the unified government charges?
That's a good question. The water charges on there was close to like two hundred dollars in water charges. The rest was electric. And believe it or not, almost a third of that was taxes and fees, which I'm like, wow. I mean, what is it for? I don't see anything being built or anything going up new. That is gonna benefit this, this county. So that's something that we definitely need to work on.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Smith, I got a question. So certainly, I got your name and your address. It'd be good for us to hear from the customer that lives at the address so that we'll know where that address is.
I can use the address you want.
Okay, we can all take it.
I can give you a couple of addresses.
We'll still, we'll still need to be able to speak back.
Oh, that's.
I don't know. Yeah, Janetta, I, I agree, I agree. So Janetta, if you can, if you can record that information too.
Okay.
And then we'll follow specifically, because I, I wouldn't know where to start without either customer name or an address.
Oh, that's fine.
I don't think we're supposed to give that publicly, if he would give that to.
Listen, if you see her over there.
Janetta, can you raise your?
I can write it down.
Here, see back here.
She's back there and she'd take it, she can take it for customer service.
Okay, I have more than one.
Thank you.
So that's all that's signed up. Rob, is there anybody online waiting? All right, thank you.
Wait.
There's one more, Bill.
Okay, oh, that's right, you could, give me one more. David Smith, if you can come up, please, and sorry, I actually moved your name over too, so I have one complete list. I ended up working with two, I moved your name over and then I forgot to call you up, so apologize. So if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my address is four hundred and troop, here in Kansas City, Kansas. Um, a lady that just moved back to Wyandotte County, welcome back to Wyandotte County. But anyway, in Wyandotte County, just like the gentleman before me, his taxes were ten thousand dollars for last year. Mine are darn near thirty five thousand. I do not understand how come in a county that has as many taxes as we have in this county that we are paying for water, sewer, and I live in a building. What's the matter with the people that own the building? Aren't they responsible for water and sewer? I don't mind paying my electric because I, I have an apartment, one bedroom. And if it wasn't for the level pay, I wouldn't be able to pay my bill. My bill has gone from fluctuate, one time it's three hundred and something, the next time it's five hundred and something. But with level pay, I'm not, I don't worry about it. But what about the people that aren't on level pay? How do they pay their bill? They can't. Just like the man said, everybody's in the food line over here on the corner getting groceries. The factories are full. We have turned away probably thirty people in the last two weeks because we don't have the money to pay their utility bill. I work with three different homeless programs here in Wyandotte County. We don't have enough financing to pay their utility bill. And they run all the way from three hundred to thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a month. There is not a house in this county that's worth that kind of money, let alone the rent. Lord help us all. BPU, according to everything we see on the wall, for our community? No, it's not, it's for BPU. Every time we turn around, something goes up. Why? Our electric bills are red automatically? That doesn't work very well, because in the same building with all the apartments that are never over two bedroom, they fluctuate from one apartment to the other. Anywhere from seventy five to three hundred dollars. Explain that to me. Please. Get somebody out here that knows what they're doing. Change the system to work for the people. Don't you keep the system rolling to pay the people that don't live where we live. None of you people have to worry about paying your utility bill. We do. We don't have the access to some things. Because number one, Wyandotte County is the lowest paid county in the state of Kansas. They can't even get to work because of the transportation problem, that's minor. Our problem is our rent's too high, our utilities are too high, nobody can pay them. And we've had to turn people away with families of five and six kids because they can't pay their utility bill. I have personally paid over a thousand dollars in the last two weeks for people that can't pay their bill. And thank God I have the money to help them pay it. And I don't ask them to pay me back because they can't. There's no way they could pay me back. So think about that. And thank God I'm able to do that for some people. But when you come to me with a bunch of kids and can't pay your utility bill, I go crazy. These little kids are, they don't understand why. That's our problem. We're supposed to be able to solve it for them. How? We can't get any help. And thank you very much and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Rob, I'll check one more time to see if there's anyone else. Any comments from the board before I move on? All right, next on the agenda is selection of officers. So I'll go ahead and turn the meeting over to Angela. If you can take it from here and then I'll pick back up after, after the election of officers.
Okay. Um, as it's, Rob, could you put the memo, do you have the memo? Okay. Section three point one of the board rules of procedure state that the board shall elect from its membership at the second meeting in January of each year, a president, a vice president and shall appoint a secretary. And traditionally, the board has handled the appointment in the same manner that it handles the election through votes. Four affirmative votes will be needed this evening to elect each officer. And then in the, the term would be for one year. So once typically the nominations are open for the office of president, more than one nomination may be received. After all nominations are received, the board shall vote on each nomination, the ones that have been seconded, that is, in the order they are received. At any time a nominee that receives four affirmative votes, then they, that position is declared and no further votes on the remaining nominees are required. And then it moves to the next position. So typically at this point, the president hands the gavel to the vice president and steps down.
I would just like to remind Rob to make sure that Tom's mic, that Tom is, for this portion of the meeting, that Tom has his microphone on before we start.
Rob, did you hear what she said? I did, it's currently muted on the audio line, unmuted on video line, but realize for the time you get, unmuted on the audio line.
Okay. Should I just go ahead? Okay, I would call for nominations for the office of president.
I'm gonna make Tom Groneman.
Is there a second?
I'd like to nominate Rose Mulvaney Henry.
Is there a second?
A second. Haley.
It's been moved and seconded for Rose Mulvaney Henry to be president. Roll call, please.
With, usually there's a motion to.
Oh, I make a motion that we close nominations.
For president.
We only do this once a year.
Right.
I know.
For president, close nominations for president.
For president.
Is there a second? To close the nomination for president?
This rose, I second.
All right, now roll call. On, this is, you're.
Closing the nomination.
Closing the nomination first. You're voting to close the nomination.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Yes.
Haley?
Aye.
Mylan?
You already said.
You just said yes, okay. Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
That motion carries, the nominations for president are closed.
Okay, now I'd like to call for the vote for Rose to be president. It's been moved and seconded for her. So this vote is for Rose Mulvaney Henry to be president.
Let me take the roll.
I'm ready.
Point, 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 point of order. Madam President, sometimes there's a, just a motion to move by acclamation that there's only one person that's on the, on the ballot. I don't know if that's against, this is my first.
So since there's only one, since we do them in the order they're taken, we don't do them by acclamation, we just do them in that order. And so since it's, it will be the same.
Thank you for the clarity.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman? Haley?
Aye.
Mylan?
Nope.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Can, can we try, I'm sorry, point of order, can we try Groneman again? Can we try to?
Yes, I can call his name again.
If, in the event that Mr. Camp can free him up.
That was a quorum.
Yeah.
It is a quorum, but just to have his.
I understand.
Groneman. Groneman.
Okay.
He's still, okay, so then typically we go through the same process now for Vice President.
I nominate Tom Groneman.
This is Jeff, I second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
This is Mary, I move to close the nominations.
I move nominations to be closed.
It's been moved and seconded, can I get a roll call, please, on the closing of the nominations for the Office of Vice President? Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman. And I'll come back, Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Groneman. That motion carries. Uh, we'll open the nomination process for the Office of Secretary. Here we are, good. One time a year, there we go. We have a roll call on, uh, the nomination for, uh, Tom Groneman as Vice President. Roll call Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman. I'll come back, Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Groneman. That motion carries. We'll open the nominations for the Office of Secretary.
I nominate Jeff Brian.
I decline that nomination.
Other, other.
He gonna do it.
No, I'll second Bob Mylan.
I moved in, close the nominations.
Uh, can I get a roll call, please, on the motion to, uh, close the nomination for Office of Secretary?
Was it?
There was no second.
I second it.
Okay.
Okay, roll call on closing the nominations, Gonzalez.
Your, aye.
Groneman. Come back, Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Groneman. That motion carries. Now we have, it's closed now. Okay, now we're going to have a, we're gonna have a roll call on the, uh, nomination of Bob Mylan for Secretary to the Board. Roll call, please. Roll call Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman. Come back, Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Brian.
Hi.
Groneman. That motion carries, congratulations to the new Board Member, or to the new.
Congratulations.
Uh, congratulations, Tom, congratulations, Bob. And I guess Bill will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So getting, uh, going into the General Manager Staff Reports, uh, last board meeting, we talked about the electric and, uh, winter preparations and things that we go through on that side of the utility. Did ask Steve to come up and, uh, go through some of the same exercises we do on the water side. Weather has impacted on water operations, just like electric, so Steve, I'll be quiet and turn it over to you.
All right, good evening, Board and General Manager. All right, today, uh, Bill asked me to speak about, um, how winter, winter storms affect water operations and, uh, what we go through, is there a way that we can, there, perfect. Great, thanks. Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, what are, what are storm hazards that, uh, water utilities face? Drought conditions, which that's not always winter, it also goes to summer, but we're, we're discussing the winter right now. Uh, ice jams and dams on rivers, uh, cold weather events like for main breaks and stuff that we, uh, have to deal with, and extreme cold weather events, um, uh, like we've had, uh, in December, and then in twenty-one, in February, we had an extreme cold weather. And, uh, and then ice storms, um, uh, going through ice storms and lose, and mostly for water, it's, it's about losing power. That's how it affects us ice storms, so, um, next slide, please. So, regionally, uh, it, it, uh, um, these are the topics we're gonna talk about, national, region. Uh, the drought forecast by NOAA, um, the ice jams that affected the city of Atchison, um, cold weather, um, transmission break in Missouri that I'm sure everyone saw the news, and, uh, extreme cold that had a lot of cities in, uh, east and southern parts of the, uh, states, um, were issuing a lot of oil advisories. And then the impact of, uh, the winter storm Elliot that had on us, next slide, please. So NOAA, um, they released a report in October, and it was talking about the Missouri Basin. So basically through that whole Midwest kind of area, and drought, um, has expanded across the north central U- US. And thirty percent of the region is in severe drought or worse. So, um, this past summer, it was real dry summer for a lot of water utilities, so our, our brakes kind of started increasing. And, uh, and our river levels are, are lowering as we go. They said record low levels for Missouri and Mississippi and Ohio Rivers, Missouri Rivers, we are definitely seeing those low levels, um, if you drive on four thirty-five or six thirty-five and take a look, you can see how low the Missouri has gotten. Kansas River, you know, we always see that, um, we don't come off Kansas, but you can see that other, you, like Water One, they, they have a collection of that. So, um, so these river levels really affect water. Risk for droughts continuing in the next growing season. If we don't get, start getting some snow through the Midwest, it's rain, which we had rain today, which is a good thing. We're gonna see, you know, the, the growing season's gonna be rough. The thing that's gonna, that come to the water side is the deeper frost depths. With the deeper frost deaths, this, um, issues, um, issues a real problem with buried infrastructure and pipelines. So the report came out, said that water main breaks and potential frozen water lanes will be expected through this winter. Next slide, please. So ice jams on the Missouri River. So this last, um, in December, late December, when we had that, uh, pretty good deep freeze for a few days, and, and it went all the way up into the north, it, uh, pieces of ice were gathering and, uh, and clogging the river. It causes obstruction to the stream flow and can cause significant reduction in flow to water intakes. Next slide. So city of Atchison, they're, they are a surface water treatment plant. So on December twenty-first, they asked residents to limit their water use. They were seeing that they were having low flows because of the ice starting to, um, not allow them to take the water they need to, to feed the community. December twenty-ninth, they declared a water emergency, um, put out to their citizens. If you can see in the lower left, uh, city of Omaha said they had the biggest clogging in decades of ice jam on the Missouri River. So these all things affect, uh, surface water intakes a lot and, uh, water utilities, next slide, please. So operations, operational concerns for surface water treatment plants, low river levels, which we're seeing right now, flooding in the spring, we see a lot of flooding, so ha- having, uh, when you're worried about the water coming inside your, uh, surf, or in your intakes that are not real high. Ice jams and dams, which we talked about, a lot of times you'll see, these, they'll have to barges out there, try to help out in the winters with this. River water temperatures, this is a big one, because the water gets, is, is extremely cold, um, of course, and, um, that water coming off surface water goes right through this, through into the tru- to the treatment plant. It, uh, runs through the system, then it goes out in the system, goes into the reservoir, the pumps, the pumping station reservoirs and, uh, the towers. And, um, so that spring runoff, uh, that's a, one of the big concerns, so if you've, when you've taken the plant tour through Steve, the treatment plant, or the, and he shows that shakes the water and says, this is a surface water, it looks like chocolate milk, and he shakes it, and it's clear, well, that's horizontal collector well, and that's what BPU has. We have two of them. And the other part we have to worry about, if you're, that is zebra muscles, that the last decade, we've been dealing with that, if you have surface treatment, the utilities. So KC BPU has horizontal collector wells, so our first one started construction in ninety-six, so after the flood of ninety-three, you know, our Quinero Water Treatment Plant, it took, it took some major damage and, uh, and, uh, we were close to going offline. It was real close, uh, and, uh, we fought issues, and so it was decided that we needed to build a new plant, well, building a new plant is, well, what are we gonna be, a surface water treatment? Well, at that time, uh, horizontal collector wells were starting to get traction. And, uh, and so the engineering's company that come, they come and, uh, they, they showed us, um, the, the horizontal collector wells. We did all that, um, seen the, the pros and cons on them, and it was by far the, the pros were the way to go. So that we constructed the first one, uh, it's a hut, so it, it, it sets up flood level, five, five hundred, uh, level of, uh, your flood, and, um, and it goes down a hundred and fifteen feet deep. It, uh, it has twenty-four hundred and fifty, um, twelve inch screens that go out around the surface. So we're taking water underneath the river. The second one was constructed in two thousand and four, it's a hundred and eighteen feet deep, and, uh, twenty-eight hundred foot of, uh, screens that go out twelve inch. There's four pumps in each one, they each can produce, um, twelve, each pump can produce twelve million gallons a day. At the time when we built the first one, we had the large, it, it, the way it could produce was up in close to fifty million gallons a day, and, uh, it was the largest in the world at that time. It is now, as a year ago, it's this, it's the, it's United States' largest collector well. We built a second one, like I said, it's equal to it, and so we could, uh, easily, uh, so we try to run these now, that we, we try to run of about twenty to twenty-five each. Now, for one has to go down for maintenance, then we, then what, and our, our, say, our day, day average about forty million gallons, then we just, this one's capable of going all the way up to fifty, so we're in good shape. Next slide, please. Vantages of it, we collect our water eighty feet below the river. That water temperature is pretty dang consistent, so this last, this last, uh, in December, the water temperature was coming out at fifty degrees compared to probably twenty to eighteen degrees off the river or, or less. We, it was fifty degrees at that time. We don't worry about ice jams, we, is, don't worry about us, we don't care about it. Like I said, our constant water temperature, and we have that natural filtration, where you saw the chocolate milk, you see how clear it was. It is huge for us. So this, this lower picture is kind of taking a picture, looking at it, um, from our, our, uh, that's from the power side's, uh, surface, uh, intake. Next slide, please. So let's talk about main breaks, water main breaks are especially common in the winter, and the reason is the sudden drop in temperatures. Extreme cold temperatures can cause cast iron water main breaks to get brittle. At the same time, the ground tends to expand and freeze, which putting out its pressure and, and on aging infrastructure. So back to temperatures, us controlling our leaks is, is, is about temperatures, control, trying to keep that temperature, not getting it below, um, in our towers below thirty degrees. We start getting below thirty degrees, we, our brakes start picking up even more. Next slide, please. So risk for main breaks, low pressure areas can cause low pressure, if you have leaks, barge leaks, icing conditions on the roadways, increased cost in, in util- for utilities and material cost and labor cost. Material cost, the last couple, you know, especially last year and a half, our ca- our material cost has gone crazy. It seems like about once a month, we're getting new letters from, um, vendors that prices are going up, usually five to eight percent every time. It, it's crazy how much material cost has gone up. Labor cost, labor cost is high because we're out working those leaks, and a lot of those leaks are after hours, it's, it's a lot of overtime hours. Uh, our crews put a lot of hours in when we get cold weather. It, it, I bet we have crews working every other night, um, uh, and just normal winter. Uh, when, when it gets extreme, we're working round the clock fixing leaks. And, you know, with those long hours comes risk of injury, so it has a risk to, you know. The other one brings that, that boil advisories, um, if your pressure drops below twenty for a significant amount of time, then you gotta go through, um, you go through a state and you, uh, go with KDHE and we issue a, a boil alert. It, it, it's not a bad thing to, to issue a boil alert, it's all about being, being cautious with our customers, because we want to make sure we have the, there wasn't a chance that we could contaminate our water with the main break that would pressure dropped. So they're not a bad thing, that's why, you know, you, we see a lot of them. Luckily, knock on wood, you know, we've only had to deal with a couple in, in my thirty years. So, next slide, please. So here's the one we were talking about, May, on December thirtieth, over in Kansas, Missouri, that a thirty inch main, uh, rupture. And, uh, if you guys saw the video, if not Google it, it, it's pretty amazing, uh, you know, one of the, there was a Johnson County car that got sunk into a hole. But, um, they got contractors, um, quickly, got it, got it fixed, but they went through, uh, a boil advisory for a few days. And when you go through a boil advisor, I don't know if David's in here, uh, it, it's, it's real nerve wracking, because it's not that we went into one, it's just trying to get out of one. And we have to test, and, uh, you have to, you know, wherever that area is, you got so many tests you have to do, you take test, um, every tw-, so we gotta go through two tests, two, two twenty-four hour, forty-eight hour test. And so roughly takes, um, it takes you three days almost to come out of it. And, uh, and you just knock on wood, because if you have one paw, if you get one that came back bad, uh, for some reason, then we go back and we take that sample over and take, uh, high and a low, which we're used to with our T- TCRs, and, but you start that process over and you go back, and so you're always like, oh, gosh, we gotta get out of this, it gets nerve wracking. Uh, next slide, please. So other issues nationally. So Memphis was in the news a lot, uh, with this past storm. You know, they're not used to that cold weather, and, uh, they had a lot of breaks. At that one point, they had, uh, I, gosh, I can't, I can't, it was like twenty percent of their system was down, or, or it might have been a little more, was down because of low pressure, because of main leaks, they had so many going and they couldn't keep up with them. And, uh, Tennessee had a lot of, uh, in, in, uh, state of Tennessee, they had a lot of, um, advisories out there because of boil. And if you go, if you've taken trips back there, and their mains are not as deep as the Midwest, they're not as deep, especially the north, you'll see a lot of fire lines that, they had a lot of fire line breaks going into buildings that was causing part of their problem. Well, you'll see the pumps, the water line comes out of the ground, goes inside the, their, uh, their pumps to pump up the pressure, to go up into their buildings and, and go right above ground, well, they had a lot of freezing of those, and, and so it was a lot of issues. So it, it, it's a big deal when you're not used to, uh, uh, dealing with the cold weather. One good thing about our crews, our crews are excellent, we repair a lot of main breaks, so they are really good at it. Not bragging, because you don't really want to brag about it, but they are really good at it, and that's, and that's what we do. Next slide, please. So for us, this last storm Elliot, so we basically had five days of freezing below temperature, below freezing temperatures. It took us nine days to recover from that. to get back to what we were running normal at that time of year. We had seventeen main breaks to repair. Like I said, those as of, when you go with a freeze, every day extends it, makes it a lot worse. So last, the February one in two thousand and twenty one, we had thirteen days of frozen below thirty two degrees. And every day you go longer, it just multiplies it. So our leaks were in the fifties on, in that day, on, on that leak. But so we, our crews responded to seventeen leaks during those nine days. And we ran eighty no water calls. Our troubleshooter side, the meter side, and we dealt with twenty two frozen water meters. So there were numerous calls that we didn't respond to because they were internal issues. So we just talked them to it. You know, you gotta get heat and stuff. But, but with the water company, it's not just the frozen. Once it thalls out, we go through the process of the next phase because everything's starting to thaw out. So you can see where we had twenty or thirty three water meters burst. So we have to run those calls because then they start running water at night. It's still getting freezing. So they're freezing streets, sidewalks, whatever. So we'll run those calls. And then customers called in for ninety two pipes had burst inside their house because it obviously got froze. And then once it thawed out, they started bursting. We talked about costs, overtime hours, the crews spent three hundred and thirty four hours of overtime fixing these seventeen leaks. Troubleshooter spent two hundred and nine hours because we had so many calls. And I, and all the calls are not on there. There's a lot of calls I didn't put on here, but we ran that to, to me, we might've went out to the house to assist, to assist the residents. So it, it's a lot of calls, a lot of cost come, come when we have storms. Next slide, please. How to reduce our risk with infrastructure? One is well, horizontal collector wells, the engineering and the engineering department and GM. And at that time, I think Leon was still here and Don Gray was the manager. Made decision to go with the horizontal collectors, this, it, one of the best decisions ever made by this utility. And then the nearmen treatment plant having redundant redundancy inside it. So if something breaks, we have something, you know, it's, we're not, we're not, you know, it goes down, we automatically it moves to the next side while we repair that. It's, we couldn't live without because we, we don't have that easily feed to would like as the power has a pretty easy to get. It's, it's not as easy with water to get water from another utility. And we have standby generators at Mylan and Argentine pumping station. So if we lose a power to them, then we have a generator come on and, and pump water out of our reservoir out into our system, into our elevated taken out into our system. Circulate the elevated tanks. So our operator at nearmen, our operator who's also running a treatment plant, he also runs a distribution side of it. And he is, he's watching those tanks to turn them over in the winter. We'd like turning those tanks over twice a day. We want to turn them over twice a day. This time of year, let's say four thirty five, we, we, it, it's a forty foot to high tank. With our waters like forty foot, we'll run from the winter, we're running about thirty five to twenty. About fifteen foot of turnover. We never want to go all the way down in case there's a fire or something or a bad leak. Then that puts us at issue or could push an issues if we lost pressure of going into advisory. So we, we drop about twenty or fifteen feet in the elevated. We try to do that twice a day to rotate, to keep that water fresh. During this Elliot, our water temperatures, it started out the first couple of day, like day and a half was about fifty one degrees at elevated towers. Time we got through the break, they, they had dropped down to about forty three temperature in those. But we, we kept above, always keep above third. It, that's, that's the best thing. We also have dual electric feed at all the critical locations, all the pump stations and at nearmen power. And, and then we have future standby generator will, will be putting in at nearmen. So if we was to lose power and they couldn't be supplied, we would have a backup generator to supply, to immediately get us back online. And then the most important, an annual capital replacement program for aging infrastructure. This is where Jackson, Mississippi, they've made the news a lot. Everybody's read the stories. Their stories come to not having good management business practices of having infrastructure replacement programs. And that's really important. When we come to you and, and ask for replacing water main and stuff is, is, is a reason for it. Or even it seems like our plants knew it's, you know, it was built in two thousand. A lot of that equipment is already outdated. And once the material we have on stock is gone, we can't fix it. We just came up with the, with that, with an issue and we had to get emergency P O to bring a C T U or CPU in. And so that, that's what we're constantly doing and we're always going to be doing this is getting that. Cause we don't want, we, we don't want to not be able to produce water for our citizens. Next slide, please. Our operational risk that we deal with, having an asset G I S work order management is crucial. From, I've been doing this for thirty, thirty four years now. And where we came from there to now is nine day difference. Before we were looking things up with maps, aerials, with little microfiche trying to get shut offs. We are so much better equipped today than we ever were. And, and we have, our crews have quick access to see what had in the field, what was done in the past. Before they'd have to call in and if it was night, they wouldn't get that information. They now have it where they can quickly look at on their phone and see what we've done and have access at it. So it's huge. Dedicated trained staff. We have a great staff at, at distribution and at the treatment plant and at the engineering staff. They all love their jobs. They're dedicated. You can, and you can ask Jeremy, he's been down there at distribution a lot. And sometimes it's a, it, it, it's, they will, they are dedicated and they will speak their mind. And Jeremy has been through it with them down there. But, but they do care. They really do care. And then follow safety rules, you know, with, we have, we have really focused in on this the last couple of years. And, and we've come a long ways. And we work really close with the distribution side of electric and we've come a long ways. Maintaining large stock items, materials in the store and large stock. You know, we went for years, started reducing stock because it was just money in the store room. Well, the last year and a half, we've had nothing but supply chain issues and you know, and the electric side's facing it. And so like our ductile iron pipe, we're a year, a year out on it of getting some of it. And we're fighting those kind of issues and all constantly trying to get material in here. So having a large stock and which we are bringing back our stock items till, till the supply demand gets back in shape with, in the country. And a lot of, a lot of vendors and manufacturers are actually been ringing on new plants, which is really going to help over the years. And then well maintained tools and equipment. We have outstanding, the garages guys are excellent at getting us, if we break down, getting us back up as quick as they can and fixing our tools. And then always having that annual fleet replacement program because our, we use this equipment, a lot of times we're using it twenty four seven. It's not just, you know, Monday through Friday, we're using it twenty four seven, using those trucks out there and working these leaks and stuff. And, and equipment digging up the main brakes. And then, and then have a contract with the local construction contractor to assist if you need it, if you need it. Luckily, we have never had to call them in for anything small that we, anything about twenty four and below, we usually take care of ourselves. But we've had a lot of stuff, we've had several main breaks. You've seen that they're small leaks, but they're on larger mains. We've got it. So we went ahead and got a contract with them. But they can assist at any time and other things. So.
Hey Steve, before you move on, just to make sure to clarify because so on the fifth bullet point, the annual fleet replacement, it's not the entire fleet. So could you just expand on that just slightly?
All it is, 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 is that we continue to have in our capital budget replacement to replace one or two vehicles a year. Yeah, that, that's usually we're, we're two to three a year that we do in water. Electric, they're probably a little bit bigger because they're, they got more trucks. But that's what we look to try to do. Next slide, please. Last slide is just, here's our water main breaks for twenty two. We, we ended just about what our five year averages. Where it's at, we had a couple really pretty good years of two twenty and twenty one. The two thousand and eighteen stands out because that's the year the fireman decided to help us out, which we really like and is, is do inspections. But at that, when they went out, there was no training. And so they were flowing full blast and we, we caused a hundred and thirty breaks. So you knock off a hundred and thirty, that's where we would have ended up that year at. So we made a video training and they out, they have it every year. They can get it's on YouTube. And so they, we only see one or two breaks a year now. It's great. So any questions?
Close down the collector wells for maintenance.
Well, so we do maintenance at, so our, the max will, will kick out our, our tickets, what we need to do. And then if we have a, have any kind of break or something down there, something breaks down, then we go down there and then fix them. As we're doing a redevelopment, I don't know if that's what you're talking about. That's where they go down and redevelop the screens, which we had to do that with collector well one several years ago. We, we went down and redeveloped the screens. At the time, we're probably still five or six years from have to do two. And maybe it might be stretched out to eight. Because the deal of it is when we use one, we only had, when we started with click horizontal collector well one, we only had one well. So we had to run it at its max. So we are running it in the summer, close to fifty M G D. Okay. And so we're running it next, we're pulling in the water is, is to run that. That's why we have two. One is to have a backup, but the other one is, is to run it about twenty twenty five M G D. And so then we're not pulling as hard. It takes out that redevelopment a lot longer. So but I, I would guess five to eight years will probably have to do with, I'm, I'm guessing that's what we'd be at.
Okay.
For redevelopment. And when we do that, that, at that time, whoever's here, they'll come in and give a presentation on it. If you notice that whoever's here.
Notice that.
Okay, I'm, I'm, thank you for the overview and the presentation. It's, it's really very well done as always. The overtime that you expressed three hundred and thirty nine or so odd hours. Is this an, an off year or is that a mean average? I know it's going to fluctuate based on the weather.
That one event, that's, we got, we have, this time of year, we have overtime every week. I mean, every, like, I, I would, would be surprised if there's not somebody working now. It, it's there, it's usually, we don't go very often with that leak. This weekend, we had crews in multiple times, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Crews were in, working a leak or something. So we, we work a lot of leaks. When it gets summer, we could, we do pretty good until it gets hot and dry. So this year started getting dry. So our leaks picked up a little bit in the winter. If you go back to that, go back one, go back to two thousand and twelve, seven hundred and thirty six, that's the most leaks in history of BPU. That was a dry summer and, and we weren't alone. Every utility in the, through this region had their highest year ever. And we worked so much overtime that year, our guys, they, they were tired. I mean, and because you know, we, it looks like we have a lot of guys, but we, we don't have, we don't have that many to compare to the amount of work they do. They do a lot of work. So they do an outstanding job.
And I, I imagine they do. I was wondering, so is that a, a matter of like, because I imagine there's discretionary pay or there's a difference for overtime salary.
Those hours, I only included the hours of time and a half and double time. I didn't like, like the, the quick hour. I just did that, that the time and a half and double time on that.
Okay. Is there some possibility, has there been any recruitment to maybe look at probably having a regular staff or having somebody additional to staff, one or two maybe that would offset because obviously time and a half and double time.
Bring in more crews?
Exactly.
To bring in more crews. You, you know, you're, you're talking about full time staff. Bringing somebody in and, and, and you know, as long as we can maintain what we're doing, we, we're probably not going to add more crews. And with, with us trying to, with this, with the K D H E loan as state revolving fund loan, you know, we're going to put about twelve million dollars in replacing means. So the last time we did that, we reduced our means about a hundred and twenty breaks a year, you know, it came down. So we, we, we just need to, you know, we keep doing that. And with replacing the infrastructure, we keep bringing that down. We need to be, if we get down about two hundred to two twenty five breaks a year, then that's where we need to be setting for the size we have. That, that's when we talked about that infrastructure leak index. We talked about the A W A benchmarking. We're at six, six something. The lowest that people are at in that study is two point three something and we're at six. So we're triple them. So we gotta get down to that. We get down to that level. But of adding staff, no, we don't have, we're not going to be adding staff at any time. As long as our crews can keep up, we, we probably won't be adding staff.
Thank you, Steve. I have a few comments. First of all, the water department hasn't had a increase rate for over nine, ten years, am I correct? Your staff is a hundred and seven people for your benefit. This other thing is we didn't talk about the leak detection program. That's another area you need to know about. And make sure you find out what all these leaks are. So that a lot goes on with a hundred and seven people, no budget. Raise increase in ten years. The final thing, I would like for you to explain the history of the collector whale. How we got started, the number one in the world at one point.
Yep.
Let it know that Juan dot Connie, Kansas, Kansas, the pioneer collector whales. So we don't have a following in Flint, Michigan, in Jackson, Mississippi. Can I explain that to public? They know the purpose.
Yeah. So like I, I, I talked about earlier is that when we, when we were discussing building this new treatment plant, they the engineering company brought it to us and said, hey, we really want you to look at these horizontal collector wells. And, and so as we dove into it, because like I said, they were just starting to get their traction, big horizontal collector wells, we're just getting their traction. And since then, you know, Independence has one. Oletha has a, has horizontal water. One has two of them. They built one out here on Missouri. And then now they've just recently have built one on Kansas. Missouri is now, I think they are now just getting an engineering firm. Because they are surface treatment, they're just getting an engineering firm to start the process of a design. As I believe they're going to have a design for collector well. So it, it is a big, huge plus for this community to have that and have the resources where we're not worrying, we're not having to worry about putting emergency water restrictions because we'd have low flow because the river's down and then ice backup jams and dams causing this issue. So yeah, so you're right. It, it, great engineering staff did an awesome job, you know, twenty years ago, twenty three years ago, when they started doing all that.
Steve, just, just one comment really. I, I personally know some families in Highland Crest on thank I, I personally know some families in Highland Crest on Thanksgiving Day that were affected by, by a water, a water, I don't know if it was a line break, I don't think it was a main break, but it affected an entire neighborhood. And, and I know that the crews were out there on Thanksgiving morning and had that thing repaired by the afternoon. And I know that they worked very hard to do that. So, you know, I was sitting in the comfort of my home and didn't have any issues and those people did trying to celebrate a holiday and your guys are out there.
I think that's the biggest thing there always to remember about utilities. Is that you're going to have water utility workers and electric utility workers out when most of us are sleeping at night in our warm beds and temperatures below zero, 20, 25 mile an hour wind. These workers are out there fixing brakes. I used to do that. So I, I spent quite a few years fixing those brakes and, and I've been, I have come out of holes frozen because fighting water and as soon as you got up above the, the air hitching, literally can't move and you're pulling this stuff off. But they do it, they're dedicated and they, they always answer the call. They always answer the call. So I can't say enough about our staff and the operations, what that plant does to operate the whole city is, I can't say enough about it.
My final comment, 2013, we celebrated 100 years of water operation, Kansas City, Kansas.
Yes.
100 years.
Yep.
So all that we've been doing goes back 100 years.
Yep. Thank you for letting me speak and talk about the water.
You need to know that.
It is my passion.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, thank you. We're getting more operational things in front of the board too, as we, we go forward. You know, another thing on the electric side is sometimes we're called to assist other cities, other utilities during storm season. So Jeremy, if you want to come up, please. Next on the agenda is a proclamation we received. I'll let Jeremy speak to it, otherwise I'll probably take away some of his thunder.
No, it's not mine. It's, it's all the guys that went and did the work, but thank you for letting me have a minute to talk about something we received at the utility and Madam President, I apologize for the distress in my voice. I'm not sure if you know, there was a game last night.
I understand it was your national championship.
For that. In all seriousness, one of the things we do participate in here at BPU is the statewide and the National Mutual Assistance Program through both KMU, Kansas Municipal Utilities and APPA, American Public Power Association. So this past fall in September, Hurricane Ian ripped through Florida, left about just short of 3 million people without power. Our mutual assistance group was activated. We did travel with the group from Kansas, some other municipals in Kansas. And we responded to the city of Barto, Florida. Barto, Florida is about 115 square miles, which is about 35 square miles less than what we have here in Kansas City, Kansas. But they only have 12, about 15,000 customers. So when hurricane came through there, it disrupted service to a little more than 80% or about 12,000, 12,5 of their customers. So we responded down there, worked for four or five days, completely restored the city. And we left, we, we anticipated being there much longer. We tried to find a, another city or another system to respond to, to provide assistance because we were literally driving past towns and systems that were still experiencing disruption. So there was a large calling of mutual assistance into the area. What ended up happening is they had more line workers respond to the state for them what they had. You know, what they could facilitate, facilitate supervising. So that's kind of the reason, reason our trip was so short and we got back home quicker than anticipated. But be that as it may, we received a nice letter from Amy Zulaby, who is the head of Florida Municipal Energy Association, sort of like the Kansas KMEA that we have here. But also the city of Barto and the mayor from the city of Barto, Steve Giddens is his name. He, he made a proclamation that November 21st of 2022 was Hurricane Ian line workers and tree trimmers appreciation day. And so they were kind enough to send us a copy of this because we participated and a little bit about what they had in their city. Remember I said their city's a little smaller than ours, but the customer base is way shorter. To give you a sense of what I was talking about, why our trip was so short, 12,000 customers out of lights and they had 231 line workers respond to their city. So that's, that's saturation, literally. So there's a list here, I know, you know, Bill can, can pass this around to the board if he'd like. And you could see on here, the mayor's comments and the list of systems that, that worked in the city of Barto and who they went to recognize. So thank you for allowing and understanding why we sometimes dispatch our resources to other cities, towns, systems, because at some point someday we're likely to need that help ourselves, so.
So Jeremy, you know, 100, over 100 crews for a town of 2,000, when, when you think about it, I guarantee you those people, those residents of that city, when they saw those people descend on them, they were happy.
They were very happy. So there's, David does a good job of following the social media posts and a lot of people hashtag the company or they'll put something on there that David follows and he'll pass it along to us. We get it to the supervisors. It's nice to see what's going on in the area and how our people are appreciated.
Just real quick, thank you, Jeremy, obviously for sharing that with the board and with the public. You know, we know how dedicated our line crews are, our water crews are to, to keeping the lights on, not, not just here, but abroad. And so, you know, we're, we're lucky to have them and I know, I know, we all know that. So, but thank you for sharing that with us.
I just wanted to go back and talk about at least two or three other occasions where either we sent other, our crews out to other cities, Florida, Springfield, Missouri, other locations. But there was also two or three other times over the last 15 years or so where we've had people coming in to assist us too. So this mutually program is a program to where municipal utilities help one another in times of need. But also the investor owns has a, utilities also have a program where you'd see like every G and other larger investor on utilities, travel across roads and highways to get to other destinations and, and assist other utilities as well too. So it is good. I do have this, I can send it around, I can make copies into the board, whatever the board likes. It will show up in our next board packet too. So I want to make sure you guys have it. And also here, I did ask Jeremy to also be prepared to come. There's some things that he's kind of caught up on, so I would like to start having him on the agenda more, more often as well, so. But thank you, I thank the crews for, for going down and providing the assistance. Thank you. Miscellaneous comments, I've got a few things. One, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the, the officers for the election tonight, Rose, Tom and Bob for your officer positions. Also last Thursday, Tony Cannon from APPA paid a visit to us. And he wanted to come in town for a number of reasons, but he also, it's a, hey Bill, I'd like to come in and see the rodeo grounds out in Bonner Springs. So Jeremy and his, some of his guys went out, took Tony out, because as you know, we do have the rodeo come into town in, in March, right? Okay, March 31st through April 1st. And so there's a lot of preparation to go into that. But Tony had been board chair, wanted to take a look at it. Spent, spent half a day or a few hours out, then it came back, we met with him later that afternoon. But he was, he told me over and over again how impressed he was with the rodeo grounds. And it was in much better shape than he envisioned. And, and it was, would be one of the better sites, I think, for APPA to host this rodeo. And so there was some issues, I don't want to get into a lot of conversation about this, but there were some issues within APPA. And as you know, during the pandemic, we were scheduled to have the rodeo. We had to pull out for pandemic reasons and then we decided to host it this year. And then there were some, some issues at APPA. We were able to work through and resolve issues that, that we were faced with at the time. But I think all that's behind us, I think, I think we're, we're going to have a pretty good event out there. Would encourage the board to show up. The rodeo itself would be in Kansas City, Kansas, in Bonner Springs. A lot of people will be staying in Kansas City, Kansas. We, we made that request as a requirement to, for us hosting the rodeo. You want to come back up, Jeremy, take those questions? And, but they're going to have a banquet over, over in Missouri. I mean, there was, they feel like the, we didn't have adequate meeting space to host a banquet. So, so it will be a Kansas City, but we'll have the rodeo itself here. If I overlooked and missed something, I'm just speaking off the cuff.
No, I think that's, I think that's kind of it. We are in the process now, we've assembled a pretty good team to take care of all the things that we're responsible for. I would add, when the rodeo was canceled in 2020, it was canceled by APPA, not by BPU. Unfortunately, BPU at that time, we had put a lot of resource and effort into building the site. And then Los Angeles was supposed to host in 2021 and it got canceled for COVID as well. 22, they last minute were able to pull one together in Austin, where, where the ENO was, the APPA ENO conference. One thing the APPA did fundamentally was move the rodeo away from the, you know, it's no longer part of that event, which allows smaller cities like us to, to be able to host it. And we don't have the, the, you know, 900 or 1,000 room block hotels that they can have a conference in and house everybody at. So we did go to them with some requests so that our city, Kansas City, Kansas could, could get some benefit from this. And, and they have committed, APPA being, they have committed to using as many Kansas City, Kansas providers of services they can, and they have secured 200 room blocks out here for the event and in and around the Legends area, which is close to where we will be. So Bill and I felt like that was about as good as a, an outcome as we could get when we arm wrestle with them about the Kansas and Missouri thing. So we did, we did pretty good. I thought we did, they did, they have had some challenges there. But they, they did want to get back here since we made such a commitment before and it was canceled on us. So we're grateful for that opportunity. And, and the more and more of the, the team here, you know, the, the executive team, the directors, the board members, the, I think the, the more and more we can get Kansas City, Kansas and Kansas City BPU out there into these different organizations at the state and national level, the more benefits our company is going to reap and our community is going to reap by the name association, what we're doing, seeing where we're at, learning about our community and just hopefully all those things at some, someday come back to us. And they're starting to, they are. So I think it's good work that there's a number of people on the executive team and then, and then there's a number of those executives that their team members are involved in different state associations and we really encourage that and, and try to push that for our community.
So on the rodeo team itself, can you quickly speak through what the makeup is of that and how many people are, are, and was involved with the rodeo planning? Not from APPA, but the BPU.
BPU, right. So we've got about 18 people or so on our planning committee. And a couple of those folks are also involved in the committee with APPA itself. So that, those 18 people or so that are here are doing kind of the heavy lifting of the event, organizing, tracking, providing, facilitating something in some kind of way for the event. We will be sending out here real soon, a global email to all of our employee base to try to drum up a different set of volunteers to help us out the day of the event on Friday evening, Friday afternoon, evening. There's a sort of a family fun time event out on the site. We'll have some vendors out there providing some, some food and beverage and we'll have some music, some training courses or we'll, we'll start that with some training courses and then the families are all welcome to come out and, and be a part of that. That's something new, never done it before. So we're the first to do that. Like to see them continue that because, you know, the rodeo is really a celebration of the line workers, the work they do, the commitment they put into their community, the sacrifices that they make in their community to do this work. And, and really the family gets lost in that because the family sacrifices too for these people to travel and work long hours and be gone overnight, same as, same as the, the water folks. So that, that event's a real nice celebration of the whole commitment of, of everything they do. And then Saturday is the traditional rodeo, as you all know it. And then the, the awards banquet Saturday evening downtown here, so.
We have dates for that.
March 31st is the Friday event, the Friday afternoon, evening event and April 1st is the actual rodeo.
So how many of our, of our people will be competing?
Right now, we, we're hoping for four to six of our apprentices, which, you know, we can, we think that'll happen. We have a number of our people we're going to require to, not require, but they're going to add, you know, be asked to help the day of the event, run different trucks, do different things, whatever like that. So that might take away from some of us competing, but we're going to encourage one to two crews to, to participate and then the rest be out there helping in some manner.
Well, it would be interesting if there's some way we could measure the economic impact that it, that that particular event's going to have on our community. If, you know, the 200 hotels, whatever that equates to, or it would be interesting to, to know what it gives back.
That's, that was one of the things we pushed for big is we were going to do this and spend this money. We want some of the money for the event sent, spent back in our community. So we're hoping, you know, out there, people start showing up Wednesday, Thursday. They take advantage of the shopping and dining and what have you out there and not just bed money, but all that comes along, along with that.
That's good. I wish there was a way we could maybe advertise it a little more because I think there's a lot of people that have never been to a lineman rodeo and don't know what it is. And it's, it's really an entertaining day. I, I wish we could encourage more people to show up. I mean, it's always crowded, but.
And we can get, we can make sure Dave is trying to push some more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be a good thing.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. I did have a brochure mailed to me. I'm not sure if you got, check your mailbox, it says you may have one or you may have one in the mail on its way. So again, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you informed with, as we approach that date and we'll, we'll come up with a way of trying to get the message out to our, our community too. So finally, last but certainly not least, tomorrow, one of our board members will be celebrating another birthday on the 19th. So I'd like to take the moment to say happy birthday, Bob Mylan. Madam President, that's all I have. Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll move to board comments, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Just thank Steve and Jeremy and everybody that gave me something new to learn tonight. And happy birthday, Mr. Mylan.
At midnight.
At midnight.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Groneman, I, I don't know if he's able to offer us some comments this evening? Okay, Mr. Haley?
Okay, all right, well, thank you. First, certainly, I'd like to congratulate you, Rose Mulvaney Henry on being president. I'd like to thank Mary Gonzalez. This is my first year and you shepherded me, or shepherded board through the process during my initial year as president. Although I had no frame of reference, I would say job well done, you know, I certainly appreciate that. And thank the staff for bringing the presentations tonight from water, especially. I genuinely appreciate and learned quite a bit and congratulations on the proclamation that we received. I'd really like to thank those that have come to, from the public to give the concern, to express the concerns. I'd really like to thank those that have come to, um, from the public to give the concern, to, to express the concerns that you have about what continues to, um, be devil, um, what is a beautiful utility that we have with the BPU. As I mentioned last meeting, that was my anniversary, my first year here, some of the same issues that compelled me to, to be a part of this process. I'm hearing reflected, uh, in the very, um, very strong articulations that you brought. And hope we can really work more toward, uh, addressing that, um, includes enhancing customer service and, um, doing something about unconscionably high disproportionate bills for where we are. Um, I should do my, uh, my public service announcement here, uh, Madam President. So I, I remain committed and I'm at D H A L E Y, D Haley at B P U, uh, dot com. The phone number, nine, one, three, five, four, four, six, seven, four, nine. Um, and this, these meetings are recorded, available at, um, B P U dot com. They're archived there now. So make sure that you share that so that information is disseminated, how you might reach out and let me know ongoing concerns. Finally, um, I report since we last met, I am on the Economic Development Finance Committee. And, uh, they did meet on the ninth, January ninth, and there were several issues that came up and one, talking about the event space, which was interesting when we're talking about the rodeo. Um, the big issue was on what's been called the linear project. Uh, the near project right over here would take the Reardon Center, um, and retrofit it, collapse it. Our only event space, by the way, in Wyandotte County and, uh, retrofitted. There was some discussion of that being moved over to what would be called the, um, U and B Bank Parking Lot by the Merc over there and taking that parking lot and creating a new, a twenty-two million standalone new facility or the retrofitting of the Reardon Center, eight and a half million and what role the BPU might play in either one of those projects. The committee, Economic Development Committee, did advance that to the full commission, uh, which would take the initial project, um, which is to retrofit the Reardon Center, our event space and to develop them there for mixed use over there. So also want to send, um, best wishes to our member, Tom Groneman, who is, um, coming around through, uh, surgery and hope that he continues to mend well. And, um, thank, uh, the BPU for our participation in the ML King. I, I was very pleased that we were given an honorable shout out for participating in the community celebration. And, um, I've said everything I have to say except the most important thing of all. We really do want to celebrate and congratulate Mr. Mylan on another year. Happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Mylan.
Yes, sir. When I've said happy birthday to you, I've said it all.
Okay. First of all, congratulations, Rose and Tom and myself for the new elected officials. Uh, it's been a trying year. It's going to be a more difficult year because a lot of things need to be done. And, uh, I want to thank, uh, Steve because, uh, fantastic job. And, uh, a lot of people don't realize exactly that we wear two hats here. Sometimes we forget about the importance of the water that keeps us alive. And we got, uh, underselling people. You ever had a increase in employees in how many years? Five or six years? Don't increase. So you're doing a good job with, uh, the number of hours, overtime hours and so forth. And thank God we were not December thirty, seventeenth in Maine in Kansas, Missouri. That's a amen there, folks. I still. All of that, just want to thank the board for another successful meeting. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. Mr. Bryant?
You gonna save yourself the?
I am.
Steve, thanks for reminding us of the investments of our community made for reliable, safe drinking water have paid off. I'll admit, I usually take this essential commodity for granted as I imagine others do as well. That's a good thing. Jeremy, our appreciation for BPU staff's commitment to this community as well as their willingness to assist others cannot be overstated. This is one more example of the staff's dedication to their neighbors, which is all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Um, so, uh, brief comments this evening. One, I'd like to thank the members of the community, um, who again showed up tonight and, uh, shared some of your concerns with us, uh, concerns which, um, I believe that this board, um, and, and the general manager and the staff, um, we empathize with. And, and, um, I, I think that we're going to, we're going to try to do some good work, um, to, to try to, to try to address some of this. So thank you guys for continuing to show up. Um, Steve, obviously thank you for the presentation. It was, um, very, very thoughtful. Um, and to Jeff's point, I think we all take a lot of our utility services. Um, we always expect the lights to be on and we always expect the water to be clean and usable. And, um, and, and unless until folks get into some of the weeds that we get into here in these meetings, um, it's hard to understand the effort, um, that the staff of the BPU goes through, um, to make sure that the things, some of us take for granted on a daily basis operate. So thank you for that. Um, Jeremy, I don't know, uh, and, and I guess Dennis and the other Wildcat fans in here, we know that was your national championship last night. However, I'm confident that you guys have not double booked yourselves in Houston where the national, the actual national championship is this year, which is going on during the rodeo. So I want to make sure you guys are aware of that, the overlap there. Um, hopefully that does not impede, uh, K State's first trip to the final four. Um, and, uh, Bob, congratulations on another year at midnight tonight at twelve oh one. Happy birthday.
I was born at five twenty-sixth, but anyway.
Well, there we go. Well, I mean, then five twenty-six AM tomorrow, um, for sure. And, uh, uh, I'd like to echo Mr. Haley's comments. Um, I, I'd like to thank the invitation from, uh, the Unified Government to, uh, the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration on Monday. Um, that was a, a very moving event and, uh, was very thankful to be able to take an opportunity, um, to have an opportunity to participate in it. Um, that's all I have this evening and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
This is Mary. Move to adjourn.
Haley, second.
It's been moved in second and roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman. Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Moveney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
I'll try Groneman. That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.